They say these are aggregates, but as you look down, it gives the exact question that teachers were responding to.
So the question on the table is what do we do, right? And I think that question, we've sort of answered it in different ways in the past. But to me, it feels like we should discuss, you know, some of the most celebrated metrics and some of the most challenging metrics that we see in a board meeting or have the committee that's sort of analyzing that surface those to the top. But I think it's largely, you know, then a question, a discussion with the ED about what do you think of these? How do you think the school should be responding? What do you think? Because we're, again, we supervise the ED, right? And we've had more engagement with the community because of all the challenges. But I think we need to let Dr. McCleary sort of help to inform of how we need to interact in a new administration.
Well, the other thing that I would add to that is that Chris did share this with the Climate Task Force. But one of the discussions that, and then I joined that call, but one of the discussions was this, this is actually much broader than the Climate Task. And there's a whole bunch of things in here that have nothing to do with the climate, right?
Yeah.
And so there needs to be ownership of this somewhere.
Well, what do you mean ownership? I mean, if the requirement is that we take a survey, a stakeholder survey, then we've done that. Again, you know, one might say, yeah, okay, it's more than just taking a survey. It's discerning from that specific action. But just because there's 102 pages of data here doesn't necessarily mean that there's 102 pages of actions. I mean, literally, literally, it could be that the result of this is a lot of good data that, you know, that that dwells down into, you know, four or five actions that then easily get divvied out.
Yep.
Or it might be 40 or 50 actions.
So the ownership question is who's going to do that work? Because it's actually, the Climate Task Force does not think it's them that should be doing it.
Well, I think most of it is not them.
I think most of it is probably the school.
And I think it's a question of the board sort of and then the people who are digesting this in a task force to present to the board to say, it seems like there's five things that we should have a discussion with the ED about how can we, how can, how can the school work to improve this, right? And so there may be some that the board's got to, got to work on this, right? If there's questions about the board's execution and in relationship with parents or whatever, those are clearly board things. But the rest is going to be, you know, working with Dr. McCleary to figure out, you know, does there need to be a response? Is there something we can tweak in how the school works that we can hope to improve these over time?
So I would suggest that the Governance Committee should go through this document, identify any that they think that we're responsible for as a board. Clearly articulate that to Dr. McCleary, which ones we think we're, you know, we're tackling. Get his concurrence on that. And by default, the remainder of those, I think, live with the school at that point in time. And to your earlier point, Craig, if there's an outlier, you know, measurement, what's the plan to address this? So it's not acceptable just to take this as benchmarking data, you know? We've got to do something with the information at this point in time.
Yeah. I would personally rather see the task force who's more familiar with the document. Just as we said on the surface here, it's very tough to get your arms around it. And if you don't know the depth of the questions behind it, I think giving it directly to governors really would be a bit of a challenge just to get up to speed to understand it. I'm thinking we'd move faster if we had the task force.
Okay, I'd be fine with the task force, but again, I would come back to the task force needs to clearly delineate what they think the board owes.
Yeah.
Owns. They need to get Dr. McCleary's concurrence on that. And by default, anything that's left belongs with the school.
So can we clarify which task force we're talking about?
Yeah, because I'm not sure which task force it would be. I actually think we need a separate task force.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Yeah, I think it's a separate.
Shouldn't we have a survey, you know, a task force that is responsible for making, taking a look at the data and then also putting out the data? I mean, putting out the survey, right? Owning the survey.
Well, I think, I think there's, there's been always the challenge and part of our motivation to get this, to have a third-party survey was to not have the administration author the survey.
Right.
So we've sort of, we've crossed that boundary where we, in the past, the survey was viewed. The survey was administered and written by members of the administration. So I think as far as what to do with it, I think most of it is actions for the administration to, to take on and use this as data for them, for the administration to tell us, the board, what they're going to do, what we should be doing with it. I do like Tom's idea that if we can identify in governance, things that belong to the board in agreement with Dr. McCleary and say, yeah, this is, this is a board item, we got that. But I don't, I don't think that we, as a board, can, can own this.
Why does it have to be neither or? Why can, Eva, I think, was raising a point that the Climate Task Force had, I assume has the most familiarity with this data. Is that correct?
Not really.
There's an intersection.
There's an intersection because it's really Chris. So this happens because Melissa has been sort of the board person responsible, not responsible, she volunteered to work with the school on all the surveys because of her background in market research.
Then give it to Melissa to do.
She's actually getting on a plane, so she's going to be a long ways away.
So.
She could see that coming.
She's. That was the reason that it sort of was there. And then it was because Melissa was rolling off the board, she asked for a volunteer to actually help with that. And Chris volunteered. So it's really, right now, it's Chris. And then he sort of shared it with the Climate Task Force without really thinking about it, like just thinking, oh, well, this is a climate thing. And then recognized, wait a minute, it's not really a climate thing. It was really because, you know, I just took this on on my own. And so the question is, and him, he's not here unfortunately, so I don't feel comfortable saying, oh, Chris, let's have a task force of one be responsible for, for reviewing this.
But that. I don't, I don't think it's governance. I think, I think the vice chair could do this. And I say that thoughtfully because you've been involved, you know, just happenstance. You've been involved with climate, right?
Which is a very small part of this.
It's a very small part of, yes. It should be, I think it should be a couple folks.
Yeah, it should be a couple folks.
But not governance. I don't think it belongs in governance.
I don't think it's a governance thing either.
Yeah, so, so this is where a bit of the challenge lies. So, and this isn't a response to you putting it on my shoulders.
It's a denial.
This is, this is a, this is apart from that. So comments were made that, you know, a lot of this belongs in the administration's business, which I agree with. But I think at some level, the board has responsibility and accountability to make sure we're very well aware of what are some of the key findings here where there's great things and we want to celebrate them, but where there are challenge areas and we need to make sure they're addressed.
Yeah.
And in a sense, we're accountable to make sure they're addressed, even if they belong to somebody else from another.
Duty of care, I think Allison would say.
Yes, exactly. So from that perspective, I think it's critical that the board has that type of ownership and we institutionalize that. I don't know what that, whether that's governance or something else, but, excuse me. But I think that's something we need to do because the earlier point, it's more than the charter may say or whatever may say that we need to take a survey, yes, but I think we need to do more than just take a survey. And that has to be formal or formalized, I'm sorry, what that is. So, so then back to that, under what umbrella is that ownership? Is it governance or is it something else? Is it another committee? I don't know. I don't think it's a task.
It's a survey task force.
I actually think it is a survey task force.
Standing though, because it's going to happen twice a year.
The question is, is it going to be standing? I would say right now, we probably don't want it to be standing. I think right now, we want it to at least go through this for the first time. I mean, I think what we're, what we're realizing is that with our task forces, we really need to have them be, you know, there's a task and then they go away after a while.
That's the idea.
Yeah, that's the idea, right, with the task force.
This is a, this is an ongoing commitment.
Well, no.
Twice a year to.
It is, but I think understanding panorama is, is what we need to do right now and to then to come up and to work with Dr. McCleary.
We don't have to solve the structural question right now.
Yeah, exactly. Because I think right now, that is the challenge.
Continue to digest the data.
It's not super straightforward to digest. I mean, someone has to spend some time to do it. We can't just look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's really it.
I think I'm an outlier here. I feel like this is, the administration should take these results and go back and come present to the board. This is, this is what the survey said. And these are the priorities that we gleaned. These are the actions that we're going to take and that the board would then respond to that. It's up to us to educate ourselves, to make sure that we're fully informed. But I think we should be responding to the actions that are coming out of our ED and principal and assistant principal saying, these are the things that we've taken from the survey. And I, and I think it's, it'd be an opportunity for me in that moment to say, well, you know, when I read the survey and I took the time to go through, I'm struck that you chose to not focus on this as a priority. And I think it'd be that, through that dialogue, that we'd have that. As opposed to keeping it at the board level, I, I don't. I think our job should be to, to be a partner with the administration to ask questions and coach and things like that.
And make it happen.
As opposed to directing those priorities.
So I agree with you. And I just want to clarify, when I was speaking of, so to speak, institutionalizing an aspect of this, I think though, it's very important for the board to have a clear sense of ownership to go through the survey also and glean what is actually critical and important that they need to keep an eye on.
For the board.
And make sure that the administration or whatever other stakeholders are in fact accountable for addressing.
So Rick, so my question is, is that an individual responsibility as a board member to go through? Or is it the board as a body? Because I think for me, I feel like I'd want to take the responsibility, go through and, and come up with my questions and the priorities. I don't know whether or not, it's actually, it's actually a question. I don't know whether or not that's something that the board has to identify collectively. These are the four things that we really care about or that we think we should be focused on. Or is it, I read the 102 pages and these things concern me and I'm struck, Dr. McCleary, that you chose not to focus on that. Can you tell us why? And if there's disagreement, then we have a discussion.
Would that turn into like a grilling session?
No, no, no.
That sounds awful.
No.
This is a board survey.
It's a discussion.
So the historical, the historic, how we, not how we got here, but what happened in three years ago is that the administration did, actually, they, they wrote the survey, they executed the survey and then they presented results. And there was clear concern after the fact on the board and maybe during the fact on others of the school committee that the administration was sort of screening, cherry picking what's going on in that survey. And there was, I think there was a lot of parents riled up saying, what about the data? The data clearly indicates that this is a huge problem. And there was a little bit of a concern that the administration was saying, this is how I'm going to interpret it and it's not a problem.
But isn't that what the dialogue, is the solution then for the board to capture and help to drive those priorities? Or is the solution to still to keep the accountability with the administration and then be able to ask in a very generous, gentle way?
Here's what I, I suggest that we ask Dr. McCleary what he thinks because you haven't said one word.
I generally find I learn a lot more by listening. You're a hero.
Maybe you could teach us that.
This is a, this is a, this is a board-generated survey. And to me, it seems a little.
Yeah, I don't know the right answer.
Well, I don't think the right answer is to sit here and come up with a survey with 102 pages of data and say, geez, this is too much for us. Let's hand it off to the administration and ask the administration to try, you know, try to interpret it. If we're having trouble, if we're having trouble interpreting it, then I think therein lies part of the problem is in our, either the survey mechanism or survey or what have you.
Let's, let's.
But that's not my point at all.
Let's, I think.
I'm not saying, I'm not trying, I am not.
I'd like to have a little bit of administration input on this.
Well, I, I, I tend to like, you know, meetings that don't last more than an hour maximum and surveys that don't go more than 10 pages at the most. That's just my personal preference. But I guess, I, I, I mean, it's a big survey and I don't know where the questions came from or who generated them. I suppose it was the company we hired. Is that fair to say?
Largely.
A lot of it.
We chose from their menu.
Oh, I see. So they provide you with a big menu of questions. You say we want that one, that one. Okay.
And we get to decide how many courses we'll have.
Okay.
Apparently a lot.
So I, I suppose there's a summary in there somewhere that, that sort of gives you the.
This is, this is a summary.
So, but, so I guess, I guess the way to interpret it is, say this one closest to me, teacher family relationships. That means that 68% of the people who responded think that there are good teacher family relationships? Is that their?
There are a series of questions in there, but in general, 68% of the faculty, it was a faculty.
No, it's, it's the responses. So if there's 10 questions and 10 people took the survey, there's 100 responses. 68% of those responses seem favorable across a number of questions.
And when they say seem favorable, that meant that they thought that teacher family relationships were good.
Were favorable, right.
Yeah, so to, to very specifically answer your question. So in teacher family relationships, because I'm up on their site right now, there are eight questions around teacher family relationships everywhere from how friendly are your skills families towards you to, in your communication with families, how caring do you seem towards, how caring do they seem towards you, et cetera. For each of those questions, the, the, the bonding can say, not at all respectful, respectful, whatever. So they, they determine at a question-by-question level whether the responses, what percentage of the responses are favorable in the top two box or top three box, whatever. And then they aggregate all of those questions under this heading of teacher family relationships. And they average the score and they come up with, oh, 68% of the responses are favorable in this, in this domain. So, so, you know, there's obviously a challenge in the staff leadership relationships issue, but there doesn't seem to be a major issue in the teaching efficacy area.
And who, who were the people that answered the questions? The faculty?
That, is that correct?
Is that right?
Do we know how many responded? Do you know how many people responded?
So you can, you can drill down on the data on a question-by-question basis.
I think there was slightly over 50 responses, if I remember.
More than a half, they're, they're at least.
And we have a total of what, 90 some effort?
So like roughly half of the.
Yeah, it was roughly.
At least 60.
Yeah, a little more than half, yeah.
I'm looking at it.
Oh, it's 60.
And does it mean, for example, that student effort there, or what they call now grit, but I would call effort, I guess, student effort is not that great?
Our teachers don't believe the student effort is that great.
They're not trying to.
So I would be looking for you to come back and say, these are the, you know, two things that we're going to do to help teach our students how to persevere is what, you know, I'd be looking for you to come back on that one, you know, to say. Teaching efficacy, I'd like you to come back and say, that's important, but we seem to be doing a pretty good job of it and we're going to keep on keeping on is what I'd be looking for you to come back and on that one. On the staff leadership relationships, I'd like to hear a very detailed plan on how we're going to, you know, improve that score. That's, that's what I'm looking for. And if there's other categories, again, that are a board responsibility, I think we need to come back, you know, with a plan on it. And we got a benchmark, a benchmark now, we're going to do this again. We're going to have two data points. You can draw a line between two data points and we'll be able to see where these things go. What we've got to stop doing is changing the survey every six months because then you can't draw a line.
Yeah, that was the idea of doing this, right? That was the idea of moving to this tool.
So hopefully, people feel like this, this is, you know, an anonymous survey at this point in time because that's something that we heard concerns about. Hopefully, you know, people feel that this is not a cherry pick survey because this is a standard set from, you know, from this vendor. Hopefully, this vendor is going to be able to provide us some benchmarks, you know, going down the road. But we will be able to draw lines if we don't abandon this thing right out of the gate just because it's 102 pages long.
I, I think that's one of the most important things that as a board, the ownership of this as, in terms of this question of getting it passed off is from a faculty's perspective, I think that we, as a faculty, need to know that the board is going to ask us these questions and they're going to listen to us and they're going to take action about that. And that they're going to be aware of that. I think especially coming out of last year, there was a sense that the board said, we didn't know what was going on. And, and the staff was like, we were trying to tell you. And so I think the idea of sort of passing this off is probably not where we want to be as a board, that we want to say, we know what's going on.
So can I just quick follow up on that? I'm still smiling because it sounded like I interrogated poor Dr. McCleary. A lot of my friends would laugh at that, but the, that's my intent. But so is, is the message though, to the, and by the way, I'm not, you know, I understand, we need to all be very focused here. But is the message that is delivered by the faculty here a message to the board? Or should the message be to the administration? Now that we have this deeper administration in place, is the message, hey, administration, this is what's going on in schools, what we need to do. And that part of our job is to be a, kind of police the police, to really get in and make sure from a governance standpoint that those commitments that are being made by the administration are being upheld. And that we are weighing in and saying in a gentle way, why did you not choose this and things like that?
I think if you are telling me that this is a board survey, that the expectation is that the board is getting and analyzing and making actions about that data. We think we are speaking to the board.
And, okay, all right, so I, that's, that's awful. I, for one, keep trying to figure out the role of the board.
Yeah, in these.
Yeah. Because I, I think, I understand the need for the, especially the history, the need for the board to hear the message and to provide oversight and make sure that the right things, that where we can pull the right levers are being made. I, I just think we're at a place now where, where we have this administration who should be taking it and they are running the school. And so I just want to be careful because I just, I understand all this, but I want to be careful about the board's role.
Okay.
Pauline.
Yes, Craig first.
I would, I would recommend that we take this up in the next board meeting, actually. But, but take the action to actually ask the people who have looked at the data so far to bring back a summary that we can actually process the data on. But it, it's a great question of how do we solve this long-term?
Yeah, that we'll have to discuss later.
And I don't think we're going to get there.
We're not going to resolve that today. And Ev, yes.
Just a comment, and I'm excited where Mike is at, but I think a lot of discussions sort of end up in this ballpark, which is accountability versus responsibility.
Yeah.
And there's ownership on both parties. And I think from my perspective, it's the board that's held accountable for making sure that the administration follows what the survey is saying, acts on it, has dialogue about it. But it's, but it's the board that's accountable. The buck stops with the board, but I think it's the responsibility of the administration from an execution standpoint. And so I think it's just that, it's that dissection between accountability and responsibility.
So I would propose in this particular case that we ask Chris, Rick and Dr. McCleary to meet to discuss this particular issue. I mean, it doesn't have to be a task force, we just, we can just assign them to do this, right?
The issue of how do we?
The issue of how to interpret this and how, and how to move forward and to bring back next board meeting recommendations.
And will this get posted also those of us who have?
I think that that would be for the three of them to figure out. Because I, I truly think there's an initial activation hurdle here with panorama in understanding the tool. That's complicating the analysis of the data that has to happen.
So you're suggesting that those three work through the data?
Understand the tool with panorama.
Yeah.
And then work through the data and come back with, you know, how, an approach for how they would recommend moving forward.
I'm trying to separate the two questions. The data this year and how do we sort of, where does this sort of land structurally for the long term? Are you saying they both, they do both of those?
Yes.
Or just, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. But I do think that it's hard, the reason why it's hard is because we don't understand the data and we don't understand the data because we don't understand the tool. So.
So I'm fine with that.
Okay.
If you are. We'll figure it out. I mean, I, I think, so I'll just share, what I'd like to do is, yes, understand the tool better, talk with panorama to see how can we analyze this data in an effective way. But I think most importantly, figure out how do we want to approach this going forward? Because part of that then comes down, after that, do you then start looking and really analyzing the data? To Ken's point, yeah, I think we want to distribute this almost as soon as we can.
Yeah, as soon as we can.
Once we figure out a good methodology of how you actually read this effectively.
What it is.
So.
Okay.
I think one other, in following up with panorama, one other interesting question would be how have, we can't be the first people to be trying to do this.
Yeah.
I assume. So somebody else's best practices in this area.
Yeah, clearly. All right. Well, moving on. I'm taking, I'm obviously not very good at estimating time on these chats. It's my first meeting. Got to get there. We, we have a need to reschedule the October meeting. That is the meeting that the auditors attend. And they need to come here because we will be looking at the financials. So can we take a look at calendars quickly and see whether we can make it on a different day?
What's the current date?
22nd of October.
22nd? One question that I have is whether if we could do it earlier that week rather than do, rather than moving it to 29th because that's just off by numbers of, by a week. Could we do the 21st perhaps? Is that possible?
We can do the 21st.
Tom, are there, do you know of dates that the auditors can do?
I don't, so let's, let's get some dates.
Get a couple of them?
Let's get a couple of dates that we could perhaps do and then we'll take it to them.
Would any other day that week work?
I could do the 20th.
Like the 20th, yeah, Tuesday, the 20th? Is that a possibility?
Yeah.
People can do that?
Do we want to also just throw the 29th out there?
Yeah, then the question is, the 29th, is that going to be, cause major problems?
Fine.
I could make all this.
Okay, so the 20th and the 29th, should we give those as our options?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. That's great. So we know that the October meeting is not going to be on the 22nd. Either the 20th or the 29th.
We'll come in costume if it's the 29th.
If it's the 29th, that'd be the 30th if we come in costume. All right, moving on. Finance committee, do you have an update?
There is not a finance, there's not a finance committee report for this month. June obviously is our year-end, July 1 through June 30th. And we've got some year-end entries that need to be made and things like that. So the June 30th financials are not closed at this point in time. We'll be in a position to report those at the August meeting. So nothing further to report from a finance perspective this month.
Okay. Governance?
Let's see, at our last meeting, and I'll try to do just some brief highlights here. We discussed a number of different policies that are currently in the process of being reviewed. Complaint policy, which members of the board should receive complaints? How does it get disseminated? Communication policy, same type of thing, external stakeholders, how do they communicate with the board individually as a group? What documents get shared? Which ones remain just for that individual? If any, stakeholder guidelines for parent and faculty. So that there are a number of policies that are sort of ongoing from a review standpoint right now. And we've mentioned Board on Track a number of times and many of these fall into the category of consulting with, engaging, leveraging Board on Track from a best practice standpoint. So as we begin to face some of these items and we start thinking about, well, we need a policy for that, the next question becomes, hmm, does Board on Track already have something that we can leverage? So that's where a number of these fall into.
Do they have anything for dealing with surveys?
We can add that to the list.
Add that to the list.
Okay. One I didn't mention here, ED professional development policy. And not just necessarily for, you know, hours throughout the year, but also what's sort of the best practice for ED professional development is the best way to do that, so engaging with you, Dr. McCleary. So again, we've got a number of these that are currently in process right now. Let's see, we're currently working with Dr. McCleary, McCleary on ED goals for 2015, 2016. Board recruiting, we have added a number of new bases to the board over the last year. But we spent some time at the last meeting also talking about where do we still have some, if not just gaps, where do we need to strengthen the board in certain areas? So finance was one of the areas that certainly we ended up talking about. It's relative to HR, it's both with yourself, Mike and Liz, that we've been able to strengthen the areas in HR. Education was an area, I think we still said we needed some support. We've got sort of Ken and Rick. And then fundraising, we also said we could use another person. So there were a number of areas that we said we still need to try to do some recruiting. And Pauline, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, so we circulated this desired candidate profile. I mean, what we have done in the last couple of years is the Governance Committee or the Recruiting Task Force will identify, you know, this is the type, these are the skill sets that we're looking for for the next year. And the, oh, the one that you missed was real estate and facilities, right? So those are the four areas. And education is pretty broad. Last year, it was really specifically focused and this year it's a little bit broader. I think one of the things in education is, you know, people with more higher education experience would be desirable. would be desirable. And the qualities are the same. The target board composition, this was last year's goal that we were trying to move towards fifty percent non-parents. I will just say with our retiring trustees who will be rolling off during the course of this school year, what we will end up with right now is five for the at-large, not counting the stakeholders, five parent trustees and four non-parents. So we're actually really close to that.
I'm sorry, say the number again. Sorry. Five parents?
Five parent trustees and four non-parents. But it's six parents because we have the parent rep. So of the at-large trustees, that's, that's the direction we're moving in. So my recommendation would be that we continue to try to get to, you know, to, to sort of just stay in that ballpark, right? I think that having sort of fifty percent parent representation is probably where we want to stay.
I count double.
Oh, yeah. She counts double. Seven parents. So I just wanted to see if there was any discussion about this. And then what will happen is that the, this will be the profile going forward and then the recruiting task force will take this on and develop a plan.
So just in terms of the recruiting task force, is there any active recruiting going on right now?
There are a couple of candidates that were going through the process and were sort of put on hold while we dealt with, you know, assimilating all of our new members and with the change in leadership at the school. So I would say there's a couple that are in abeyance, but there is no other active recruiting going on. It really was sort of not all that active for six months. So this would be an effort to get re...
Doesn't sort of be review, view of re-kicking off?
Yeah, re-kicking off of recruiting efforts.
Recruiting based on the need to the board for this coming year.
For this coming year. I mean, one thing that I did take a look at was sort of how all the trustees' terms line up. And actually, it's nice because of the nine at-large trustees, there's three that roll off like each year. So, you know, we're not going to have suddenly a whole bunch just appear one year.
That was my next question. So we have three whose terms are expiring in this academic year?
No, we've got two expiring this year and then three the following year, three, 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 kind of. Yeah.
And so are we looking to expand the board or just replace going out people or...
Oh, that's actually a good question. I mean, we didn't, did you guys discuss that in governance? I wasn't in that part of it.
We didn't discuss that in governance. I think we've discussed it recently at the January offsite. I think we, at that point, had said eleven plus eleven trustee, our goal. At one point it was eleven at-large plus, plus, plus the parent, plus the faculty, plus the executive director was our long-term view.
So two more than we have now. So we would need four new people because we need to replace our two who are rolling off, plus two more.
One thing that struck me is the qualities at number one, which could be generic, but I thought it might be helpful to have something like, you know, understanding of the AMSA charter and enthusiasm for it. Because that would encompass the stem.
That'd be even better.
Yeah, I think that'd be even better.
Obviously, yeah. Well, we want that, but the challenge is that if we're talking to a non-parent who hasn't heard of AMSA before or has just heard, hey, AMSA is a cool school, they're rated number three in the, in the state, they won't have deep familiarity with the AMSA charter.
Right, but that's something that should be, every board member should be able to give the five-minute speech of summarizing the key design elements of the AMSA charter.
Yes, yes, they should, but we are talking about recruiting board members who are currently out in the community somewhere.
That's what I mean. So when you tell them about the school, you have to tell them about what differentiates it from other science and technology schools.
But I, I guess I was viewing these as qualities desired that, that they have, that this perspective and had that quality right now.
Yeah, so you could...
Versus the, the desired quality that they should have six months from now is, is I think maybe where you were going. I'm not sure. Does that make more sense?
That, that does come out in the process. I mean, I would say all of our non-parent trustees definitely understand the mission and are, are very committed to it. And it's actually a pretty rigorous recruiting process that we put them through. So I think they get there. This is a document that gets posted and that we send out to people. So like, we'll send this to, to...
So just to be clear, you want to replace the two that we'll be losing this year? That's what we're looking at? To retain eleven plus the, the, the parent and teacher roles?
Nine.
No, we have eleven now.
We have eleven now.
So you just want to replace the two to stay?
Right, we want to release. Yeah. I think ideally we had wanted to grow to two more.
Thirteen, yeah.
I thought so, yeah.
Thirteen was the target.
Thirteen was the target. Thirteen at-large.
No, I thought you just heard eleven was the target.
You did.
Yeah, I think you, we missed.
So it's really not replace, it's replace plus add-on.
It's replace two plus expand two. That's, that's the goal. So, yeah, it's not eleven.
We have eleven, nine, ten, eleven. We have eleven.
We have eleven now.
Eleven at-large.
We have eleven at-large now. We are losing two. So we will be at nine. So I think we want to have four more and we probably want two parents, two non-parents would be ideal.
Is there any guidance around, one of the things that I've been hearing a lot over the last few months is the importance of outreach, right?
Yes.
AMSA's ability to get into the local businesses and things like that.
I think that's a quality we want to add, actually.
Yeah, so I think, I think for one, targeting G healthcare or, you know, leadership in those businesses that they immediately can help to make a connection with the school. So I think that'd be good, too.
Yeah. I think that's, that may be spoken slightly to in the last point, but you might want, we might want to elevate it. It does say it in the last sentence, given current board representation, there's strong comments for non-parent community leaders who are core town residents.
But I think his point is that we should add it as a quality.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, right, we should elevate.
I'd love to see. That's a great place to start, too, the HR leads in some of those companies. That's what Chris got.
That's how, so, so just so we know, how we do about this is we look for referral sources. We're not really just going to say, oh, do you know a person? We go to whoever may be able to refer. So that could be the charter school association, I mean, that's not one, but it could be, if it's finance, it could be a trade association for, you know, controllers. When we were looking for HR, what Chris did was reach out into local businesses and, and go to the HR person and see if there were perhaps people within those, those companies that would, were looking for board experience, for example.
And that may be an interesting place to start, for us to create some target companies that were interested in the area that we want the school to have a relationship with?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I will add a number four, which has something to do with outreach, right, corporate.
Target companies and the, that we want AMSA to have a relationship with or something like that.
It's sort of, you know, this willingness also to use your personal, that, this, I've read about, there's a lot in governance things, right, that for boards, there, there needs to be a willingness to sort of use your own personal and professional connections too for the benefit of the school.
I think the only other thing was just the task force members, Pauline, Scott, Roger, Chris, and Mike. I think that's it for governance.
Great, thanks. Education committee.
So, so obviously, this, the earlier discussion that we had this evening shows, one of the things that the education committee is supposed to be doing is to take a look at academic excellences embodied in the charter and the accountability plan and curriculum-related policy. And work recommendations to bring to the board. I think last, at the last meeting, I, Melissa mentioned that she and I had met with Dr. McCleary and in the interim, I've had some emails with him as well as a meeting this past Monday. Also, I had some email talks with Pauline to discuss, you know, sort of directions of where things are going. So I really want to focus the committee's attention on making sure that we understand the charter and the accountability plan, to be in a position to support some of the things that Dr. McCleary is envisioning to come. And so he's obviously looking at the curriculum part of this. The education committee is supposed to look at the governance assisting the board of trustees as a whole and its government's role. And so that's where, where I've headed. He had mentioned the strategic objectives calendar that he mentioned to the board earlier this evening to me as being one of those things that, that we should be working on, the education committee, to make sure that we're preparing materials to bring to the board in parallel with Dr. McCleary bringing certain information. So that the education committee is bringing stuff in in coordination with Dr. McCleary to make sure that the board is fully informed on things to take. So part of this was also sort of getting a sense of membership of the committee and what the roles would be. And, you know, in particular, members from the, the school side administration and teachers as well. So we had some discussions around that. Liz kindly has volunteered to join and I'll be reaching out to the board as well to, within the next week or so, to describe more fully what I see the education committee is wanting, is going to be doing, as well as reaching out and hoping that I'll get some additional board participation in that. So I expect to have an education committee meeting before, before the start of the school year, just to get things kicked off.
Great. So Liz, you are officially joining that committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think you need to be appointed by me, so you're so appointed.
Thank you.
Great. Agenda requests for the next meeting. Do we have, will clearly follow up, we'll close out the investigations, the collective bargaining and the third-party survey. Are there other agenda requests specifically? The August meeting is often light. It, it does happen right after school starts, I believe.
So to that...
Twenty-seventh.
Teachers are back the twentieth, students are back the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
And I think it's the next day, right? Yeah.
So one item, and I, I think we would, we talked about putting it in the August, is, you know, Board on Track speaks of having our meetings being more strategically oriented.
Yep.
So maybe we might want to spend a few minutes talking about how do we do that so that we're really focused on those types of things.
Yep.
Could we get introductions from our new principal and vice-principal at that meeting as well?
That'd be nice.
Assuming their schedules will accommodate, that'd be a great introduction.
Okay. Anything else? All right. I will take a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss pending litigation and negotiating strategy for collective bargaining, given that, how do I word this, given that doing so in open session would be detrimental.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, meeting is adjourned.
Tom, every time I see your desktop, it makes me dizzy. How do you have that many files there?
This is fine.
Fine. It's all about fine.
[laughing].
[inaudible].
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 I think there are about a hundred and two questions, actually. So it's a little misleading on you. Though the P D I was a hundred and two pages long.